Let's have the sponsor out. Thank you Representative Farnsworth for being available all day for this.
It's been deja vu.[12.11][12.11](laughter) Nick Farnsworth from [inaudible 00:01:23]. There has been considerable discussion, and I believe that there have been some recommended amendments and ways in which we can push these two bills together in a consistent manner. I haven't done that personally. We've had Attorney Walker and Shannon Bellows has also been working on this, and that has given me some sense out of it. So I would be happy to yield this chair to one of those individuals who will help clarify that.
That'd be wonderful. Can someone speak to how comprehensive ways these bills get put together?
I think that this is an area where there's a lot of opinion, the line of dispensaries, caregivers, and DHHS, which is really exciting. So I think that the conflict of interest language that is in 1058, bringing that over into 1059, that's also in line with the Department recommendation of designer purple. So basically, that that would be that testing laboratories would not be owned or under the control of registered dispensaries or caregivers testing their own product or competitors' So I think that's one case that needs to move over. And then the only other case that was in Representative Sanderson's bill that I think Representative Farnsworth was comfortable modifying is Representative Farnsworth's bill had a requirement that the director of the laboratory have a master's degree, and we just wanted to identify that other laboratories in the state don't have a requirement. Representative Farnsworth suggested perhaps a master's degree or four years of professional experience. We are comfortable with that. Certainly, someone who's the director of the laboratory should be experienced, but we just wanted to make sure that we weren't creating a higher standard there. And I can't speak in full to the department's recommendations, but certainly we have no objection to the department's recommendations that are on purple here. Although, we do want to make sure, and I think people are in agreement here, that testing is optional. There are some patients who want a product that is tested and is labeled, and there are other people who, particularly in smaller caregivers or patients who are low income, may not want to see that expense. And I yield the board of members.
Can we like to fix this as well, or?
Senator Brinkley, Representative Team members of Health and Media Services Committee, my name is Dan Walker. I represent Wellness Connection of Maine, and I work with Metta. Yeah, so I've spoken with Representative Sanderson about this. I hadn't actually chatted with Shannon about this, but it's nice to hear her opinions about it. So I think that we agree with the combination of these two. I think really, I had marked up, I think, remind you how I did this, how I marked up. I think there's good pieces of Representative Sanderson's bill that were not in our, in the version that we submitted through Representative Farnsworth, and I think they can be, and I marked it up, and just, I think they can be fit in together nicely. And so I think that the piece that Shannon was talking about, I think is unnecessary about the fact that, about the financial interests and caregivers having financialist interest, and I think, and dispensaries as well, but I think that the ISO standards don't allow that anyway. So I think it would be duplicative. I mean, you could include it, but you don't have to include it. So I think that's, it would be duplicative. And frankly, I think that, you know, it was important to us as we went through, and I was just talking initially with Representative Farnsworth about this, we didn't quite finish the discussion about it, but about the educational level. I mean, I would look into, I think the person who came here last time and who testified on behalf of one of the labs, I don't think that was the director of the lab that didn't have, that didn't have the masters. I don't, you'd think that the director of the lab would have more than that. And we just wanted to make sure that these were top-notch, that they were, we don't want to price them out of the market or anything like that, but we felt that a higher degree around, around these issues would be, would be important. And the lab, you know, the person that we brought forward here had a PhD, so he wasn't much, you know, he wasn't a master's degree actually, but a PhD, so we think that's important. We totally agree with the fact that, that this is, well, I guess it's, you call it optional, but I don't think it's optional that if you're going to, it's not optional in the fact that we like the language in here, that if you're going to put a label and you're going to hold yourself out to the public, that it's what the potency is and what the cannabinoid profile is, that that's not optional. That you could, that if you're going to do that, then that has to be done from, from one of these licensed laboratories. Right? However, you don't have to do that. If you just want to put a label on it that just has the name on it, then...
So to clarify what you're saying is, you don't have to put a label on it saying what the potency is and everything?
Right.
But if you are, that there is a standard that it has to actually have been tested?
Right. And you can put the name, right. You can put the name on it that it's whatever, whatever thing it is. You can call it that, but you just can't hold yourself out of this category.
Okay.
So that would be, so again, that level is, and we did that as a kind of a compromise decision.
Any discussion questions? Representative Team?
So again, just because we're talking about two different bills here, the parts of each, you said you had a markup, Dan?
Yes, so I can go through if you want very quickly.
You'd like to large through, like, you know, you don't have to read it, but it's just large to what the elements are, you know, and then you got to back, this piece is from Representative Farnsworth's bill, this piece is from Representative Sanderson's bill, that'd be helpful.
Okay. So you've got, so starting with, in 1058, the whole, the idea of, you know, including registered testing laboratories as needing a card, that makes sense. That makes complete sense. So that was from Representative Sanderson's bill. And then, so that is in Section 1, and then in Section 5, it goes through the actual card process. So Section 1 and Section 5, it seems like it makes sense to include in 1059. Just some other sensible thoughts that were from Representative Sanderson's that were not included in 1058, were in, so if you look at Section 3, 2423 dash 2, the storage, that storage, that makes a whole lot of sense, so include that in there.
Do we have, I don't think I have the folder.
We can copy that if I'm looking.
We don't have a copy of Representative Sanderson's.
Oh, because we voted out?
Because we voted it out, we have it.
You want to just read it, or?
I'm not ready.
We have 1058.
You have 1059.
No. All right, hold on. Order in the court. We've got 1258.
I could direct you, it is, it is all in, in this pack, it was just, oh, you have them here?
All right. Any rest here?
It's all in the enclosed one, that all, this and there. I mean, it's, it might be easier if we're going to follow the markup.
All right. Three out of four.
So, session 1, the 1058. The whole, section 1.
So that's fine, so 237.
237, card goes in there. Pull that all, pull that in.
So we'd be putting that into the?
Into 1059. And then skipping up to, just to keep it on the, so, just to kind of go back to the topic, Section 5.
Of 1059?
1059.
Yep.
Sorry, 1058, sorry.
I thought it was on 1058, okay.
That's just the card, that just is the elaboration of the card, so.
So you would put all Section 5 in there?
Yep. And then, I would, so just, Section 2, there's, I think the definitions are fairly equivalent, so I'll just leave it in 1059. Section 3, subsection 2 for storage. And then marijuana in the possession of a registered testing laboratory or in the process of testing, transporter analysis must be housed and stored in a manner to prevent diversion after loss. I would move that over, because we didn't, we didn't include something like that, I think that's a good idea. So I'd move it into, into Section 9, 1059. So to Section 9, and then you go to 10C, it says a marijuana testing facility shall, and just to get there. And then if you skip, so 1 and 3 are already in there, and then 4 labeling, I think that's another good idea, marijuana being transported to and from a registered testing laboratory must be labeled for testing purposes only. I'll put that also in, you know, in 10C. Just pull that over. And then, the next section in there in 1058, immunity piece, I think I heard loud and clear that that should come in, so that's the whole thing, so 5A and B. Well.
Here we are.
Here we are, yes.
All of 5?
5, yes. Section 4, criminal history record check, I think that's, should also go in.
All right, so all of Section 4?
All of Section 4. That's it.
So it's ready?
I'd be very curious who Representative Sanderson, being one of the sponsors of these bills, should get her comments. Representative Sanderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So far, everything looks good. I could unfortunately step out at the very beginning of this discussion to discuss something. I did not hear the very first part, so I don't know if there's anything that anybody had to add or concern to anybody before I stepped back in, but...
Representative Giffey?
If you can have a recap of what that conversation was.
I'll try. So, I mean, very, very simply, before you were, before Mr. Walker was up, Ms. Bellows was up, I mean, I think, again, we heard Ms. Bellows, that she thought that we were, you know, that it was general opinion, a good conversation between the department, and Mr. Walker, basically, the character was dispensaries in the department, all this stuff. So then Mr. Walker came up and gave us sort of this detail, and so I think it might make sense for us to either walk, really precisely stay where we are, again, have, get, you know, some re-comment from folks, and then maybe we can move it along. So, so what I'm hearing is that taking Representative Farnsworth's bill, I didn't hear Mr. Walker say we were taking anything out of Representative Farnsworth's bill, and we're going to move in to Representative Farnsworth's bill from, from 1058, Section 1. From Section 3, we're going to move in subsection 2 and 4, and 5. We're going to move in all of Section 4. We're going to move in all of Section 5. And again, we'll let, if...
Oh, well, was, I must have missed that. We're going to put in Section 5 as well?
Section 5, yes, Section 5 goes with Section 1, it's just about giving them a card.
Oh, when you, okay, sorry, I did the immunity thing.
So like everything else we do, if, if this becomes the basis of the motion, we'll let our able analyst go back and put the pieces together and bring it back to us.
Representative Heinemson?
Thank you. Things like Section 6 interest, what happened to that?
Well, that one, you could, and I just mentioned that initially, was that, it's our understanding in talking to the laboratories and people who understand ISO standards, that in order to get that ISO certification, you cannot have an interest in what they're, so whether, you know, whomever you are, you can't, but, you know, if you want to add, if you want to add more, that's, just send it, just made under this.
Representative Sanderson? Oh, then first thing will be next.
So for clarification here, because that's where I'm looking real quickly here, and I missed this part of the initial conversation, I guess, is the differences between the testing labs between 59 and 9 and 58? And there's a provision in 59 saying that is a license certified or otherwise approved by the department in accordance with rules to analyze contaminants and potency and cannabinoid profile of samples. So that would be one that is not ISO certified, correct? That would be a lesser certified lab?
Well, I'd go to B.
Well, what does A mean? Why is that in there? If you have to go to B, which is, which is essentially what is in...
All it's saying is that the department needs to listen to you.
Okay.
I think what, I think what you're getting at is actually, B, is accredited pursuant to ISO, or certified registered or accredited by an organization approved by the department. So maybe you do need that piece, because if, if the department decides not to use something other than ISO.
Okay. So why do we have to have a director with a master's degree?
That's just something we, you know, as we were putting it together, and the labs that we talked to indicated that that was important, and that, you know, that the lab we were talking to had a director has a PhD, so we thought at least that should have a master's.
So are there other ISO labs whose directors may not have that? That would certainly be appropriate to do business in the state? And would that disqualify them?
Representative Sanderson? Ms. Bellows did raise an issue about that while you were out of the room, when she was up here.
Would you be a matter of striking that language?
I, it's, you know, it's the committee's bill, I mean, we, we support having a, at least a master's degree prior, so.
Representative Giffey, to clarify all of the words around that, I think what was, I think what was suggested was, the driver was, by Ms. Bellows, was a master's degree or, they'd say, four years of equivalent of experience comparable to an extended retirement.
Representative Percy, could you be, is there something?
And can you, Chair, I have two questions. One, I'm wondering if we should put in the number 6 interest? We can't put that?
I think, I think some of the discussion just was that maybe it would be smart to put that in, in the event that the non-ISO certification was provided for, so.
But 6 would need to be amended, because that, that version just talks about dispensaries.
So...
Mike, I have another question, but I'm going to start.
So you would say dispensary or caregiver?
Yeah, I would say dispensary caregiver maybe had a catch-all. For anyone that might have an interest.
Well, that's, that, now let me ask my second one, and I'm just going, under current criminal history check, it says in the, that's Section 4, then 1A under that, it says, "Or registered testing laboratory must undergo criminal history record check annually." Does that mean that everybody in the lab has to get a criminal check? Which seems a little much for me, I don't know. I mean, I'm just reading that there, so I'm not sure what the understanding, like, people might understand of that.
I think Representative Sanderson would like to stick to that.
Is that consistent with our dispensary operators at this point, any annual recheck? That is consistent?
Yes, it's a requirement.
May I just, so, so then everybody in the lab has to get a criminal check? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think one thing that we were discussing was that there potentially would be just folks who are actually handling the samples potentially, and then just, you know, maybe administrative staff or someone who never, they don't need one. That off, you could leave that to the...
Yeah, okay, so right, who has access or...
So if someone's in there, it can get in.
Representative Stuckey?
Thank you, Senator. I'm not sure who this question is for, I guess probably for the room, but this is all voluntary?
It's voluntary. The way we have it set up in here is that it's voluntary if you want to put on your label the potency or the profile.
And is there any expectation about how long this will be, before this will not be voluntary, but be a requirement?
No, I think, we had discussions with various folks, you know, as we were putting this together, and I think people didn't want the requirement, and felt that this was a good way to let the market work it out. You know, people didn't want it, and they weren't comfortable that they wanted to pay the extra cost, they wanted to keep the price low, and they would, and people were comfortable with that.
Yeah, it's just, I, I go back to when I walked in here in the early morning and heard from somebody that this was all small businesses individually owned and run, and I...
And they won't have to.
This doesn't sound like small businesses individually owned and operated to me at all.
Questions, discussion? Yes, Representative?
I'm, I'm, that's to make a motion, unless somebody wants to put the, or additional information. It looks like Representative Sanderson might have something to say.
Representative Sanderson?
Thank you. I would be inclined to support the motion as amended, which I'm sure someone's going to come up through with a couple of specifics, and one would be under, well, I guess I would like to make sure that, where am I here? It's hard going back and forth between each bill.
There was the master's degree piece, is that?
The master's degrees piece, yeah, I mean, who wrote the master degrees, or I think I would like amended, or four years of experience in relevant field of science, I think is, I think is appropriate, because we have some folks out there who, who may be operating with, don't have that, but are certainly skilled.
I think Representative Farnsworth might be open to speak to that.
Could I throw in a bachelor's plus four years?
Representative Sanderson?
I would, I would prefer or four years.
Representative Farnsworth?
I would have difficulty with that, because I think you have to have at least a basic bachelor's degree in related, related science, and then experience or a master's degree, personally.
Representative Sanderson?
Well, just very quickly, the four years of experience would be required to be in a relevant field of science. So the masters or the four years, that's...
A master's or a bachelor's plus four years. May I inquire as to why you would like to try and push the requirements down? Because I really think that we're talking about a fairly sophisticated level of testing that is going to have to, and the lab is going to have to be fairly sophisticated in order to do this. And I think that really requires a fairly high degree of, of professional education as well as skill.
And I just, let's do that, Representative Sanderson, I kind of, I kind of agree with Representative Sanderson on this one, I mean, I'm not, I'm by no means, no, next, well, I'm a very much a layperson when it comes to scientific fields, I don't know if it can be otherwise, but I guess I do wonder if, if you have the professional experience in the labs, isn't that experience as valuable, if not more so valuable than, than, you know, than the university education?
Well, my guess is that in order to get into the lab in the first place, you have to have at least a master's, or a bachelor's degree. I mean, you're talking about people who are lab techs, and to a most part, those are people who start out with the minimums of a bachelor's degree.
Representative Percy, then Representative Giffey.
Thank you. I think when you have a certain accreditation, that's got to have some certain standards to it. So I'm wondering if these labs, we're asking for accredited labs, aren't we?
Correct.
So I think we're probably covered by saying the lab must be accredited, because you have accredited operating rooms, you have to go, you know, you have to dot your i's, you have to cross your t's, you have to have the right personnel, and that does mean a level of, and I may be wrong, but I think that you need to have a level of expertise and experience in education to build it back.
Certainly with ISO standards, I guess, you probably will.
Representative Team, then Representative Sanderson?
Yeah, I'm going to sort of double down on that a little bit. So again, there's a definition of marijuana testing facilities, it's got three parts, and the first part is that facility be licensed, certified, or otherwise approved by the department in accordance with rules adopted by the department. Now, the department licensed, certifies hospitals and nursing homes and other sophisticated businesses that, and in those rules, the department oftentimes designates what they determine through the rulemaking process, what the skills and licenses and certifications of people, you know, when they have a director of nursing in a, in a nursing home, or administrator of a nursing home or a hospital. I mean, I think a lot of that, I think since we're requiring both that it be licensed or...
Could I throw in a bachelor's plus four years?
Representative Sanderson?
I would, I would prefer or four years.
Representative Farnsworth?
I would have difficulty with that, because I think you have to have at least a basic bachelor's degree in related, related science, and then experience or a master's degree, personally.
Representative Sanderson?
Well, just very quickly, the four years of experience would be required to be in a relevant field of science.
Correct.
So the masters or the four years. That's.
A masters or a bachelor's plus four years. May I inquire as to why you would like to try and push the requirements down? Because I really think that we're talking about a fairly sophisticated level of testing that is going to have to, and the lab is going to have to be fairly sophisticated in order to do this. And I think that really requires a fairly high degree of professional education as well as skill.
And I just, I just agree with Representative Sanderson, I kind of, I kind of agree with Representative Sanderson on this one. I mean, I'm not, I'm by no means, no, next, well, I'm a very much a layperson when it comes to scientific fields, I don't think it'd be otherwise. But I guess I do wonder if, if you have the professional experience in the labs, isn't that experience as valuable, if not more so valuable than, than, than the university education?
Well, my guess is that in order to get into the lab in the first place, you have to have at least a masters, a bachelor's degree. I mean, you're talking about people who are lab techs, and to a most part, those are people who start out with the remedies of the bachelor's degrees.
Representative Percy, then Representative Gittin?
Thank you. I think when you have a certain accreditation, that's got to have some certain standards to it. So I'm wondering if these labs, we're asking for accredited labs, aren't we?
Correct.
So I think we're probably covered by saying the lab must be accredited, because you have accredited operating rooms, you have to go, you know, you have to dot your i's, you have to crush your t's, you have to have the right personnel, and that does mean a level of, and I may be wrong, but I think that you need to have a level of expertise and experience and education to go with that.
Certainly, with ISO standards, I guess, you probably would.
Representative Gittin, then Representative Sanderson?
Yeah, I'm going to sort of double down on that a little bit. So again, there's a definition of marijuana testing facilities, it's got three parts, and the first part is that facility be licensed, certified, or otherwise approved by the department in accordance with rules adopted by the department. Now, the department licenses and certifies hospitals and nursing homes and other sophisticated businesses that, and in those rules, the department oftentimes designates what they determine through the rulemaking process, what the skills and licenses and certifications of people, you know, when they have a director of nursing in a, in a nursing home, or administrator of a nursing home or a hospital. I mean, I think a lot of that, I think since we're requiring both that it be licensed or certified by the department, and that it be ISO accredited, that we're going to be able to make sure that the people running that facility are qualified. I'd suggest we take out Section C altogether, because I just don't know if it's necessary.
Representative Sanderson?
I would agree with that, in respect to the sponsor here, who are lending out bills there, I certainly understand where he's coming from. But we're talking about the director who holds a master's degree at these labs, not necessarily the lab techs themselves who are testing the product. And when you're talking about the world of medical marijuana, it's relatively new, and obviously, they're not teaching master's degrees in how to grow and test marijuana at most universities right now. So I think four years of experience in this, in the field of cultivation of marijuana, perhaps working in labs that have tested marijuana, per se, would more than qualify them for that. And that would be my reason for pushing back on the this and. With that being said, with the double accreditation, licensing, et cetera, I would certainly agree with Representative Gittin's suggestion that 5C, C be stricken completely.
Right.
Thank you.
Representative Heinerson?
Thanks, I was going to say, I mean, I agree, I'm an employee as a director who meets the qualifications of the licensing and accrediting bureau. Though, but that might be the, to knowing that they're, it's going to be accredited anyway.
All right, any additional discussion, Representative Gittin?
Was that the only additional concern, or was it that piece?
I think so.
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
All right. Representative Gittin?
Motion, we start with Representative Farnsworth's bill. We strike that section that we just said that we were striking. We add the provisions that we laid out, and I'll go through them again. Section 1 from 1058. Section, from Section 3 of 1058, subsection 2, subsection 4, subsection 5, section 4, 1058, section, and from subsection 5, and subsection 5 from 1058.
We had also talked about subsection 6 under Section 3, the interest, correct? I think, I think at the, when we left, we were talking about.
It was said that that was kind of Bellson's sustenance, but let's, we want to get Bellson's sustenance on that, you know, there's probably a coverback, so we got to be. Yeah, so, yes, so that's my motion.
Okay. Any, is there a second?
I just, I just have one question about that, I know that there was some conversation about whether, because that, the interest piece just talks about principal officer, board member, agent, or employee of a registered dispensary, it just singles out dispensaries, I didn't know if that was, someone raised a concern about that, so I just wanted to.
I guess it's Bellson's sustenance, I just, I just put it in. I think so.
What's that? Can we do?
Are you going to go with that? Okay, so if everybody's okay with that.
So do dispensary, then caregiver. All right. We need a second first, is there a second? Second, by Representative Sanderson, move by Representative Gittin. Any discussion on pending motion?
I'd like to have a little caucus.
All right, there's going to be a call for a quarter caucus.
You sound such a wall. You've got new haircuts, though.
Okay, so we're in the next phase.